Same time, you know, there's steel pipes that are covered in thick concrete and and they're designed to withstand a lot of stress. You know, there's some series that perhaps some mines were dropped and then exploded in that region. But these are the sorts of things that, you know, they're going to be looking for in an investigation.
Well, the pipelines aren't being used right now. They're filled with gas, but as we said, gas flows to Europe through Nord Stream One, were stopped because of response to Western sanctions on Russia after it invaded Ukraine. The Nord Stream Two project was halted by Germany because of the invasion of Ukraine. But these pipelines still have gas. They're still under pressure. So who's responsible for them? I mean, they're leaking. Russia owns them. Who's responsible?
Right. Well, at this point, both Denmark and Sweden say that they expect the pipelines to be empty of gas by the end of the week. So that that'll take care of that issue. After that, it's unclear who's going to be responsible. You know, both of them are majority owned by Gazprom. There's a Swiss subsidiary involved with Nord Stream Two. But so you think Gazprom would be the one to do the repairs? But let's just see how fast Russia gets out there to do the repairs. And, you know, the repairs could take months. And after, that's after an investigation. Already, Germany, Sweden, and Denmark have all opened investigations into the gas leak. So that's going to have to come first and then and then the repairs.
Yeah. So they're empty. So how does that affect the gas supply to Europe? Again, they were shut down, but, you know, winter's coming, no Russian gas. We know we had this Baltic pipeline. It's owned by Norway and Poland, but that can't possibly make up for that. So what's the thinking?
Right. Well, this is going to be a really tough. This is going to be a very, very tough winter for Europe. There's no question. The homes and businesses there. The Baltic pipeline really is, will supply just a fraction of what the two Nord Streams were going to be able to do. But, you know, losing these two Nord Stream pipelines, that's not going to affect anything. As you said, they've taken offline. They weren't sending gas to Europe anyway. You know, right now, the Europeans are just going to have to, you know, they've been stockpiling their gas supplies. They've been scouring the world for new suppliers. So at this point, they're just going to have to see if they can squeak through this winter. That's all they can do at this point.
And what does it mean for Russia? That Europe won't be getting any energy from Russia? There goes those dollars. So what does it mean for them?
Well, it means right now, they are getting dollars from the gas and the oil costs, which are just skyrocketing, both of them. But over the long haul, the consensus seems to be that this is bad news for Russia. You know, it's going to lose all that money once Europe becomes independent, particularly of natural gas. Russia says, oh, well, it can turn around and sell the natural gas to China, but it's going to take at least a decade to get infrastructure set up for that. You know, Russia spent decades building up its reputation as a reliable supplier for both oil and gas, and President Vladimir Putin has just thrown that all away. It's going to be a different story once Europe becomes independent.
What security concerns are there? I mean, I'm sure they're huge. If you can attack a pipeline, if someone has, you know, else can you attack?
Well, you're right. I mean, this is a real wake-up call for Europe and possibly the U.S., you know, just about the vulnerability of critical infrastructure, whether it's energy like this or telecommunications, any number of things. And, you know, there are a lot of gas pipelines in Europe, and any one of them could be a target. And, you know, already Norway, which actually is now the largest supplier of natural gas in Europe, and Denmark, they're both stepping up their security around their oil and gas facilities. And I'm sure all European nations are taking a second look at just whether they're vulnerable as well.
Yeah, and that's on top of concerns about nuclear power plants in Ukraine. So.
There are a lot of concerns.
Yeah. Jackie Northam, NPR's international affairs correspondent. She's been following all of this. Jackie, thank you.
Thank you very much, Robin.
And a reminder, we're following the latest on Hurricane Ian. We're completely live. We're going to bring you the latest news. You'll hear a news update just ahead. You can count on us today. Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Robin Young.
And I'm Scott Tong. This is Here and Now. Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and your NPR station and from Indeed, designed to be an end-to-end hiring solution to help businesses attract, interview, and hire candidates all from one place. Learn more at indeed.com/NPR.
Coleman County, Alabama barred black people from living there when it was founded. But in it, the town of Colony was a haven for black people, and it still is.
A lot of people from different areas don't believe that black people live in Coleman County. And we do, and everybody gets along.
How black residents still celebrate Colony Day this afternoon on All Things Considered from NPR News. That's All Things Considered from four to six on Radio IQ every weekday.
Radio IQ gets support from Virginia 529, offering plans to help with a career change or graduate school. 529 plans are for students of any age. Details at virginia529.com. And from Steinway, Carolinas, featuring the Steinway and Sons' Sperio, reproducing and recording piano, the marriage of technology and tradition. Learn more at steinwaycarolina.com.
Radio IQ is broadcasting in digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRIQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISC FM Wise, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington, WEHC Emory, WLUR Lexington, and in Richmond on 92.5 and Fredericksburg on 94.
Erby of Temple Baptist Church. Pastor, please, if you tell us a little bit about your church and your congregation, and then when you're ready, let me know, and I'll get everybody else ready for the invocation.
My pastor, Temple Baptist Church, it's in the Glenbor area of Salem. And starting this month, I'll be there 20 years. So hard to believe time flies. So I do want to thank you guys for all you do. I know that sometimes a thankless job, and this is a great community. I grew up in West Virginia, moved here from St. Louis, and this is kind of my home now. But it's a great community to live in. It's a great community to pastor in, and you guys have helped make that the way that it is. So thank you so much for all that you do, and we'll go ahead and have prayer, if that's okay.
If everyone, if anyone so desires, please arise for the invocation, and please remain standing after that, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, we thank you so much for your goodness to us. We thank you for this day. We thank you for these who serve in our communities. Lord, I pray that you'd continue to give them wisdom and understanding. Thank you for this country that we live in and the freedoms that we have. Lord, I just pray that you might guide and direct in our lives. We're mindful of those in Florida at this time who are going through this horrible storm. We ask that you'd keep those folks safe, and those who are working to provide services to those in harm's way, we pray that you'd protect them as well. Lord, help us to honor you in all that we say and do today, in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for September 28th, 2022. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesdays at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. As everybody noticed, we're not on Tuesday, we're on Wednesday today. Meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokecountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed caption, so it's important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or to attend our meetings should contact the clerk of board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. And finally, please turn off your cell phones or place them on silent. Thank you. Opening ceremonies roll call. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters.
Here.
Mrs. Hooker.
Here.
Mr. North.
Here.
Mr. Radford.
Here.
Mr. Mahoney.
Here.
Item B, a request to postpone or change the order of our agenda items. Are there any requests to postpone or change? Mr. Kaywood.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Lubin.
No, sir, thank you.
Item C1. C1 is a proclamation commemorating the 30th anniversary of Dominion Metalurgical and expressing appreciation to Paul Huffman for 30 years of providing outstanding service for the Roanoke community. Marshall Stanley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As mentioned, today, we have a proclamation commending Dominion Metalurgical for its 30th anniversary here in Roanoke. As you know, recently, we had a 30th year anniversary also for Play Against Sports. Now we have one for Dominion Metalurgical. And I think what's so great about that is not only do we have legacy businesses in Roanoke, but we have them across industries. I think that speaks volume to the sizes of businesses, the industries that businesses operate in, and just how the ability to conduct business and stay here in Roanoke. So a little bit about Dominion Metalurgical. Dominion Metalurgical has been in the Roanoke Valley since 1992 and under the ownership of Paul Huffman for 30 years. Dommett is a long-running consulting and service business success story in Roanoke County and is well-known for providing high-quality, customer-service-oriented solutions to the foundry industry. Dommett specializes in supply chain management, component manufacturing, and quality management services for manufacturers. Their core business is the tier-one supply of castings, machining, and turnkey metal components. Dommett is recognized throughout the foundry and metal casting supply industry as a valued and dependable partner, as they are known for their responsiveness and unique solutions. And we have Paul Huffman here today to accept the proclamation.
Mr. Huffman.
Thank you. First of all, congratulations, both of you, on being able to pronounce it correctly. Metalurgical is not a very easy word to pronounce, and usually people butcher that. But I would like to thank the board for having me here today, recognizing our company. It's really more of a story. We do supply metal components to heavy industry and manufacturers, but it's really a story of taking a gamble 30 years ago. I was a plant manager in a local manufacturer here in the Roanoke Valley, had an idea to start a business with a little different, non-typical business model. Resigned and started this out of my basement with a borrowed fax machine. So it's a story of perseverance, hard work, an idea that you're passionate about, and what it can grow into. It's hard to believe, when Jill contacted me earlier, that I didn't even realize we'd been in business 30 years. So thank you. I just want to thank you again for having me here.
How many employees do you have?
We're small. We have 20, 20 employees.
Okay.
We're located in Valley Point.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the proclamation?
Proclamation commemorating the 30th anniversary of Dominion Metalurgical in Roanoke County. Whereas Dominion Metalurgical opened for business in Roanoke County in 1992, when owner Paul Huffman had the idea to build a business that solved procurement, manufacturing, and quality issues for industries using metal and plastic components. And whereas Paul Huffman resigned from his job as a foundry plant manager and started the business out of the basement of his home with no employees, a coffee pot, and a borrowed fax machine.
There you go.
And whereas Dominion Metalurgical quickly grew, and Mr. Huffman needed to add operation and sales staff to his team, all of whom are now retired after 20-plus years with the company or are still working for Dominion Metalurgical. And whereas eventually outgrowing the basement and offices on Starkey Road, Dominion Metalurgical currently operates out of its office and warehouse space in Valley Point, which after two major renovations, currently houses 20 operations, sales, and technical engineers. Whereas Dominion Metalurgical started with an idea 30 years ago, and while there have been numerous changes in business strategies over the decades, Dominion Metalurgical has remained steadfast to its original mission to support leading manufacturers in the supply of metal and plastic components they need to keep operations running smoothly. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia, do hereby issue this proclamation to commemorate the 30th anniversary of Dominion Metalurgical. And further, the board extends congratulations to Dominion Metalurgical for its extraordinary success and expresses deep appreciation for the company's many contributions to the community, the local economy, and our citizens.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments from any board members?
Congratulations.
Thank you. We appreciate your long term and work and perseverance. Thank you.
Great.
Same here. We appreciate the contribution to the Roanoke Valley and hope you're around for 30 more years.
Good. Same here.
Yeah, and Mr. Huffman, I'm a small business, just like you. Started with a company and then kind of went out of my own family business. But it takes, it's a risk that you have to take, but it pays off at the end. And just congratulations, 30 years. You're standing here to tell us about it. That's accomplished.
Thank you very much.
Let's take a picture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, item D1. Mr. Blunt is going to make an introduction.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm delighted to be in front of you today to be able to introduce Jim Blanton as our next Director of Library Services. Jim came to us from Buncombe County, North Carolina. That is in the Asheville metro area. Prior to that, he worked as Director of Libraries in Louisville, Kentucky, and then also served 12 years in Chesapeake, Virginia, in various leadership roles. Jim has an outstanding background in community engagement, technology services, library construction, as well as strategic planning. I think Jim is going to be a great addition to our staff here with our library system. They do such a wonderful job, and I think Jim's going to be able to help us to continue to grow our services within the community and to provide the technology that we want to be able to have for our citizens. Jim, we had a nationwide search, and Jim, by far, was just a real shining gem through the interview process. So we're glad that he started with us on September 19th, and actually, on his first day, he got to meet Mr. Radford and attended community meetings. So we have very quickly got Jim involved.
Over time.
Yeah, it was. It was over time, and he came back the next day, which I was very, very pleased about. So we very quickly have gotten Jim involved in our library operations and participating with the community. So at this time, I'll introduce Jim and let him say a few words to you.
Thank you, Doug. And I just have to say, it's a real thrill to be here. As Doug mentioned, I spent many years in Virginia, in Chesapeake, and my wife and I fell in love with this area. I consider Virginia home. I took a circuitous route to get back, but I am so thrilled to be here and serving this community and for this grateful for this opportunity. And as Doug mentioned, this is an amazing library system. I feel fortunate to be here in this community, but also serving the system and the staff. And it's just incredible. I know you know that. I'm looking forward to working on different community projects, looking at ways to expand and enhance our service delivery throughout the community. One of the things that I know is so impressive about our system is how we've also embraced technology, and that's certainly a passion of mine and something that I look to do moving forward here, too, to continue to look for ways to expand and introduce new technologies. Libraries are great for a number of reasons, but one of the things that is so special about them is they're really the community hub for lifelong learning. And as we become more and more, you know, immersed in technology as part of just our daily lives, it's so important to have the libraries there as a presence to offer instruction and to be a place for that kind of first taste of technology, to get your feet wet. And it's clear that our system has done a really great job in doing that, whether it's providing access to computers, to providing access to coding information and learning, but also the robotics, I know, is really exciting. And artificial intelligence has really a neat feature that they've embraced and obviously received national recognition for. So again, I am thrilled to be here, working for this amazing system and in this wonderful community, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Welcome.
Welcome. Pleased to be here.
Take him over to Holland and show him the library there.
Yes, sir. We've got him around to all the branches, and we've already briefed him on our exciting project in the future with Holland.
Why didn't you have the robot do the introduction?
We really could, and that's been one of the real exciting parts for me is, you know, through the process of working with the libraries, is getting to meat pepper and play with Vector and all the robots that we have with artificial intelligence. Maybe next time, we can bring in one of the robots, and they can do my presentation.
Hey, let me ask one last. Jim, did you work at University Kentucky for a while?
I didn't work at the university. That's where I went to school. I worked, I'm from Lexington originally. And went to school there. And then I worked, as Doug mentioned, I was the director in Louisville, just down the road from Lexington, so.
So my son went there for one semester.
Oh, yeah.
But we saw that library. That is incredible.
Yeah.
Library. Talk about robotics and to access the books.
Yeah.
It's quite fascinating.
It's state-of-the-art, for sure.
It is.
Yeah.
Unbelievable.
Oh, great that you have that connection.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Item E1, new business. E1 is a resolution adopting the legislative priorities for the 2023 session of the Virginia General Assembly and petitioning the General Assembly to favorably consider the priorities addressed herein. Mr. Lubin. Mr. James.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I first would like to recognize and thank Eldon for coming and joining us. We know that it is a trip for him to make it out to be with us, but as always, we appreciate his expertise and advice. And before you today, we have a resolution that has been prepared at your request, setting forth five priorities, and you know them well. They are your priorities. I will not take the time to read the resolution. But also before you, we have again prepared, as we've done the past couple of years, a pass-along card which summarizes in succinct form each of the five priorities. And for the benefit of those who might be viewing today, I will quickly go through each of these five priorities and then turn the time over to Eldon for some thoughts about the upcoming session. But the first priority that the board had requested be placed on your agenda is education K through 12 funding with three specific priorities under this category. The first is to provide additional resources and funding to localities for school capital needs. Second is to provide capital grant funding for fiscal year 2024, which, as we know at this time, is set to expire in 2023. The third is to provide economic development workforce grants for career and technical education capital projects. The second priority pertains to mental health and public hospital needs, and specifically under this category, we are urging the General Assembly to use available state funds to continue the operation and expansion of Katava Hospital. We certainly look forward to seeing what the findings are of the feasibility study that was ordered that pertains to delegate Resul's bill that was introduced in the last general session. The third priority pertains to airport expansion. And again, two points under this. The first is to provide funding for the Roanoke-Blacksburg Regional Airport to support a runway extension and other improvements. Second, to provide funding for expansion of airports to foster regional economic development. Fourth priority is the authority to impose several penalties. And as you may recall, this was included on the board's 2022 legislative agenda, and this is simply a request to allow localities to impose civil penalties for violations of local codes in lieu of criminal penalties to give us the authority to expand that ability. And the fifth is a focus on broadband expansion, and simply a request to use available state funding to improve access to and affordability of broadband to promote the goal of statewide coverage. And with that, I'll turn the time over to Mr. James.
Thank you. Usually, I would say, "Thank you, Sue," but we'll just say, "Thank you, Peter." It's great to be with you guys again, even if you didn't try to confuse me by having me down on a Wednesday instead of a Tuesday, but that's quite all right. It was a beautiful drive down, and I'm glad I'm not coming on Friday, because I would not want to be on Interstate 81 in that weather. The Senate of Virginia is still in session, technically. They actually still have a couple of bills that are left over that have gone through the conference reports, and they could still take some action on and send to the governor because the House has approved those conference reports. None of us have any idea what their plans are in coming back together, doing anything. But, you know, the House adjourned signing that. The Senate has not. What that does do, and I suspect this is part of the issue, is it prevents the governor from making judicial appointments, because he can do that in the interim. And of course, we haven't gotten to interim yet. Given that, I'm going to make a bold prediction for the 2023 session, that the General Assembly will not do an overtime special session situation for the first time since 2017. I had to go look back and see, have we really done this every year for the last five years? And yes, we have. And we did get a break in 15 and 16, but in 14, we did, in 13. So it's become more common than not. But we will, I suspect we will not do that in '23. Everybody's up for election. Everybody's dealing with new districts. Some people are going to be moving to different districts or different parts of their current district, and there will be certain situations where members may have to choose to leave the district they're in. And if they do, under the Constitution, they have to give up their seat. Well, that exists for members in both parties. Neither party is going to want to do overtime and have to deal with all of that, because people are going to need to sort that stuff out before primary season. So I'm making what I hope is a safe, bold prediction, that we will not do special sessions in 2023, which will be good for all of us. We'll be working on the issues that you've identified. Most of them deal with some type of expenditure. It's a short session. The short session exists because if you go back in time, the General Assembly only met once every two years, and they decided they needed to have a short session in between in order to deal with budget amendments. And of course, since they were coming to town, they later decided they had to deal with bills and resolutions as well. So it's just like having just a little bit shorter, but another session of the assembly. They'll be true to their original form, and it will be a major focus on the budget. There will be some tax issues that will come up. There will be kind of realigning of expenditures that the governor will put forward on December 15th to put forward his priorities. I don't have any big predictions there yet, except I'm hearing that there will be some changes relative to workforce development. And if, for those who have been around many governors, you've had just about every governor, going back to Mark Warner and coming forward, talk about the number of workforce programs across the number of secretariats, and we need to align them. We've made little incremental improvements along the way, and certainly, there have been some very valuable workforce program improvements coming from both Governor McDonald and Governor McAuliffe. McAuliffe relative to workforce training and credentials and that sort of thing and those. But no realignment. And I think what I'm hearing is we're going to see some major legislation to kind of blend some programs and change some structures. So look for that, and that will eat up some time in terms of the assembly, one in how they realign budget. Not any real, I'm not hearing any new expenditures so much as moving some things around and bringing some things together that are in disparate agencies now. What I have been assured is they will not be making any proposals to change the VOC Rehab Program. That will remain with DARS and remain as it is, even though that's viewed as a workforce development program. But, you know, years and years of the Woodrow Wilson Rehab Center, or what is now called the Wilson Workforce Rehab Center, all will remain independent as they are now, is what I'm hearing. Okay. Other things that we will be working on broadband. It was a study this year to look at what kind of policy changes might be worthwhile relative to extension of broadband as development occurs. Generally, there was very little consensus among all the parties in that study, except there needs to be continued increased investment dollar-wise to keep the progress that has been made and is being made moving forward. So those recommendations are out there as of today. So we'll see where the governor goes with that and the legislature. There is recognition for all the capital investment that has been made over the last several sessions, that many of those projects that haven't been already completed are being impacted by supply chain, by workforce shortages, and interest rate increases, and those costs are going up. There will be some grappling in the budget with backfilling, and not just state projects, but the state-assisted local projects that are out there. And so there is some discussion, recognition of that reality. And that's good news in the sense that if you've got anything going on, that any locality that's building something that has state money in it, you're not going to be left to complete the project totally on your own, hopefully, as long as the state budget stays strong. I was in a meeting last week where a senior budget conferee who was chairing the meeting made that statement directly. "We are trying to figure out what to do about this." So they recognize that problem. That we take as good news for local government and really for any of the capital project the state has going on. Let's face it, they're facing it with their very own General Assembly building, which was supposed to be ready for the session of the General Assembly. And as of last week, the announcement came that it will not be after four years. So those of us who do this stuff, one more year in the Pocahontas Building. I was looking forward to that being over. But with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions. It's a little bit of review what to expect.
Any questions?
Just a comment and one question. Many of these on here have been intertwined into the Virginia counties' respective legislative platforms.
And VML.
And VML, yes. Transportation includes the airport references, and education, I'm sure, includes that as well. And the word on workforce came when we had a meeting recently and Delegate Hidd, Legislative Assistant, welcomed workforce as being a high priority item this year because Delegate Hidd's on labor and commerce. So I'm sure we'll be visiting him on that subject as well because they were looking for, I think, citizens and local governments' input on that.
The administration has been in a very aggressive outreach posture for the last almost six months, interviewing interested parties, interviewing experts, and taking input in. So I, yes, more to come.
And then on the broadband piece, and last week, there was something from national counties about a program that funds can go from the federal government to the localities. And so I sent that to staff and also to Bill Hunter to look into for us. That's not on here. It says state, but we don't know whether we qualify or not on that federal piece. But in any instance, I'm sure he's going to look into that. The one question I have is on the education piece. While there are two or three buckets for capital grant funding for 2023.
Right.
But one of the three buckets, it was only.
Is empty for '24 at the current time?
Yeah.
Yes, that is a priority.
And so I don't even think they finished writing the rules of engagement for people to apply for the current pot of money.
Well, that was a heavy lift to as late as the budget was adopted to have to turn and stand a brand-new program up with criteria that the legislature had put forward and put some meat on that bones soon. They're working as fast as they can to get that put together.
And this card, by the way, has gained notoriety around the legislative members in our districts because it's simple and it fits in your pocket. And unlike some localities, it's not five and six pages, and people don't have time to read all that. So congratulations to Peter and to you and staff for putting this together.
Now, Peter and his team put this together, and I got a PDF version yesterday, and I show up today, and the printed version is here, so.
Yeah. Good stuff. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rafferty.
Yeah, thank you. Eldon, it's good to have you back and pushing our priorities. Airport expansion, so as long as I've been on the board, I haven't seen that as a priority. What do you see out there at Crystal Ball for that priority?
That is one of the things that I'm going to have to do some research on, how much is available within the federal infrastructure program that can help us there. Going back for just a second to what I said about all the capital projects, the legislator who made that statement said, "And we're going to be looking at the federal infrastructure money to help us." So I think that's some research I've got to do.
Okay. Eldon, you know, we've talked to you a lot about what Roanoke County's priorities are, but I know, we know, you also work with other localities in the Commonwealth. What are some of the other initiatives that have statewide impact, as opposed to just a unique, for my locality, approach? Are you hearing anything that we're missing, or is there another initiative or initiatives that other political subdivisions in the Commonwealth are pursuing that would have statewide impacts that we're not aware of here?
I was with Fredericksburg City Council last night, and K through 12 and workforce training were the top issues. And they're dollar asks on the part of the city. All my other jurisdictions are counties that are north or northeast of here, so they're all within the Chesapeake Basin. They're all worried about that capital funding that the state is putting into the wastewater plant upgrades. The other thing, and I mentioned it to Supervisor North before the meeting, and it's not so much an issue for you guys, and it's the solar facilities and what's going on in flatterland with all of that. And every one of those counties, whether that be Augusta or Culpeper or Falkir, they're all concerned with that. As you get up towards the northern end, you've got electricity as an issue. For example, Falkir with the data centers that are moving south, and Dominion and the electric co-ops have to upgrade those lines and all the issues that go along with that. So those are some of the others.
Okay. Thank you. If there are no other questions, I would welcome a motion to approve Roanoke County's resolution for a legislative program.
Can I ask you a question first? I'm glad to see the airport expansion on here, but I guess maybe you can give some insight. What is the real, realistically? I'm not sure. Will that ever come to fruition, that we're going to do anything major out there? I mean, you're sitting at the Virginia level, and I know that probably comes from a federal, but is there initiatives even across the state? Because I know there's other regional airports that probably want to do the same thing we're doing. Is there any push anywhere in the state to do anything more with a regional airport rather than a Dulles or somewhere else that's more international?
You know, it becomes a part of an economic development strategy, and you're not alone in that. I want to go back to what I said. I've got, this is the first time that any one of my counties has asked me to work on this issue, so I've got to do some research, and I've got some phone calls I need to make as to what is available state-level and what the infrastructure bill has available. I would never say never, but, and it's rare that anything such as this you get the first time asked, but you got to start. And you never know when an opportunity will present itself, and you need to be ready when that opportunity presents itself.
Absolutely.
Because sometimes things happen in Richmond that have nothing to do with Roanoke County or with the issue at hand, but it can create a dynamic where an opportunity can be seized.
I don't think, through the years, I think, I believe that's one area that if we could ever get it expanded, it would greatly help us economically. People who want to fly in and out of Roanoke, they're not able to because of cost and whatever else. You know, it's something I would love to see happen, but, you know, I'm also in the fence of, will we ever really be able to do anything from the state level, or is this something we need to be pushing our senators or all that kind of stuff for?
I'm going to use an example. Think back 15 years ago and the status of rail. And now, it's just an ongoing effort to keep pushing it farther south and west, to Christiansburg, to Bristol.
And I'm thankful for that.
And 15 years ago, the beginnings of just talking about getting a bus link to Lynchburg, I believe it was.
Right.
Was considered a long shot. So you just, you know.
Okay. Thank you. I think Mr. North has made the motion when I interrupted him.
And just before we make the motion, a great point. Leesburg's Vice Chair of Transportation and I have put together a language in the FICO transportation package for not only Roanoke, but for Leesburg and around the Commonwealth. So, and secondly, there is a huge pot of money available, but I believe unless you have a concerted majority effort on both sides of the aisle, federal government-wise folks and representatives here, as well as local state people, it's going to need to be a joint effort to get that money. And as far as getting all the money from the Federals, I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon.
I just think it was an interesting conversation. I had one of my business clients yesterday who said, "For some reason, we got on the topic of the airport." And he said, "You know, are we better off just to go out and have another one over in Bedford County, somewhere where they have plenty of land where we can just build?" He said, "That's what they did with Dulles," which I didn't realize that, and whether it's true or not, I'm not sure. But he said they basically went out in the middle of farmland and built it, and he said, "Now look around Dulles."
They sure did.
Anyway, just asking. If they give a motion, sir, and if that's a motion, I'll second it.
That's a motion to approve item E1.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker.
Yes.
Mr. North.
Yes.
Mr. Radford.
Yes.
Elton, I guess as part of your research, we'll have to figure out which committee airports are in front of.
I know which committee it is, yes.
We're meeting new people.
Both transportation committees. And it wasn't just Dulles. That's the same history behind JFK.
Right.
Anyway, thank you very much. Great to see everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elton.
Item E2, Resolution Requesting the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Railroad Administration, Fund a Planning Grant Through the Railroad Crossing Elimination Grant Program in the Bon Sac Area, Vinson Magisterial District. Ms. Cronis.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The bipartisan infrastructure law has made available $573 million in funding through the Railroad Crossing Elimination Grant Program. This program is intended to enhance safety on railroads by eliminating at-risk crossings where railroad tracks cross roadways, therefore reducing the risk of interaction between trains and roadway users. At least 3% of this funding, or $18 million, is available for planning grants through this program. The Railroad Crossing Elimination Grant Program provides 80% federal funding for a 20% local match. The application is due October 4th, 2022. Staff recommends applying for a planning grant to build upon the conceptual work completed for the Lehman Road and Glade Creek Road railroad crossings as part of the Route 460 Land Use and Connectivity Study. If awarded, the grant would enable planning, environmental review, and design of an eligible project. The next step would be requesting funding for the Design Safety Improvement Project and future application windows of the Railroad Crossing Elimination Grant Program. The 20% match will be submitted as a fiscal year 2024 capital improvement program request, and staff recommends approval of the resolution of support. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Ms. Cronis?
Happy to support and motion approval, E2.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker.
Yes.
Mr. North.
Yes.
Mr. Radford.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes. Item F1 is Public Hearing and Adoption of Resolutions. F1 is a resolution adopting an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan for Roanoke County, Virginia, amending the 419 Town Center Plan by incorporating the 419 Town Center Design Guidelines dated June 2022. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you all are aware, the county's comprehensive plan is a planning document of general nature and reflects the community's goals and visions of what the future might be. It is a blueprint for the future growth and development of the county over the next 20 years. It provides direction and guidance for both public and private sectors in making decisions about land development, public services, and resource protection. So back in July of 2019, the board supervisors incorporated the 419 Town Center Plan into the Roanoke County Comprehensive Plan. The Town Center study area is located near Tanglewood Mall from Route 220 along 419 to the bridge that goes over 419 near Chaparral Drive. The 419 Town Center Plan provides an overall vision for mixed-use multimodal area with recommendations on how to achieve that vision. Back in January of 2021, staff applied to the state's Virginia Office of Intermodal Planning and Investment for a Growth and Accessibility Planning Technical Assistance Grant. We were successful in getting that grant to develop the guidelines for the 419 Town Center. We kicked off that project in June of 2021 with a meeting between staff and the consultants. Consultants were Michael Baker and Renaissance Planning. You all had a work session in September of 2021, as so did with the consultants, as did the Planning Commission. In developing the guidelines with staff, eventually there was an open house public meeting in March 10th of 2022, a joint work session on the final draft guidelines was held between you and the Planning Commission and the consultants, and then we finalized those guidelines which are before you. These guidelines are proposed to accompany the 419 Center Plan to provide further guidance on the design of both public and private investments and improvements in the study area, to help shape the built environment, meet community expectations, provide a vibrant public realm, and maintain a consistent character and high quality of design and aesthetic over the long term. Back on September 6th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to amend the county comprehensive plan by incorporating these 419 Town Center Design Guidelines into the Town Center Plan. We had several citizens who spoke during that. They were more interested in how this would affect their particular properties. We answered those questions, turned to the public hearing. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of incorporating the 419 Town Center Guidelines into the 419 Town Center Plan, and staff does as well. I did notice there is one minor correction that needs to be made. It's on page seven of the guidelines. I think it's on page 26 of your packet. It's talking about existing zoning. It's talking about existing zoning, and it's talking about the purpose of the R3 Medium Density Multifamily Residential District, and it gives the density, it says residential areas of, it says six to two units per acre, and it's supposed to be 12. So, I was just taking from the purpose statement of the R3 district, which is one that that probably is the change that we needed to make, it's just a number missing. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions if you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Thompson? Thank you, Philip. I would like to open the public hearing. We have one speaker, Mr. William Scaff. Mr. Scaff, floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Before I begin my comment proper, may I say that I sincerely congratulate members of the Planning and Economic Development Departments for the well-deserved recognition of their excellent work represented by the awards that the reimagined 419 Plan has received. As you can understand, however, from my perspective, I cannot overlook the fact that these awards are from organizations that support the Town Center density development ideology. Thus, I cannot help but assert that the awards should not be considered an independent objective evaluation and endorsement of the design assumptions ably executed in the 419 Plan. Many of the 15 new business announcements are the result of Blackwater Resources' approach to the revitalization of Tanglewood Mall. Ironically, Blackwater saved Tanglewood from the reimagined 419 Plan. As they have repeatedly said in the media, it's the county's plan, not ours. Thanks to Blackwater, we can stand in the Tanglewood Mall parking lot and still see the Roanoke Valley Mountains and the sky, but we will not be so lucky in the future. Now to the matter at hand. I respectfully ask that the board not approve the 419 Town Center Design Guidelines without modification. I append proposed changes to site and building features that reduce height, length, and width limits in order to check density development. The recent approval of changes in zoning law does allow buildings of such unprecedented bulk, but there is no reason to promote and encourage their construction through official Roanoke County planning documents. The board routinely considers rezoning of individual and aggregated parcels of land. The board can continue to make decisions on the merits and consequences of specific projects necessitating guideline and zoning variations. Bulk buildings with a large footprint, long and wide, should be avoided because they crowd out space for nature. Smaller buildings are preferable, surrounded by indigenous vegetation, either left in place or planted. Such successive adequately landscaped units, especially in commercial areas, maintain the balance between nature and buildings. So it is with suburban 419 right now. The 419 corridor already functions as a suburban town center as it is and has appropriately sized individual buildings, setbacks, open spaces, and natural areas separating buildings. The sky is visible, excuse me, the sky is visible and sunlight enlivened the greenery, walkways, parking lots, and 419 itself. It does not look like a city, nor should it. The apparent purpose of the core district with its height limit of eight stories is to create an inner city with adjacent character districts, the density of an outer city. But we already have a city. It's right next door. County residents want an alternative, that is why they live here. Residents are not really aware of the density incorporated into this plan, for instance, the effect on landscaping and view sheds of the bulk of an eight-story building that stretches a tenth of a mile at a length and width that covers 50% of the site and paving up to 90% of the lot, crowding out virtually all landscaping. No drawing posted on a bulletin board can convey the suppressive massiveness, but residents will get the idea when they stand next to it or drive by it or try to see over it from afar. Substantial, if less excessive, density can also be repeated in other character districts. The Planning Department is anticipating that Roanoke County will someday be predominantly urban. They see as their mission managing this inevitable urbanization, which amounts to facilitating it. This becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy only if we do nothing about it. What we need to do is adopt zoning and guidelines to preserve the suburban and the rustic character of Roanoke County. We keep telling our young people to put down their cell phones and laptops and get out and experience the real world that they are typing about, yet we keep planning built environments that will overwhelm the human and the natural. We are condemning future generations to life of artifice and artificiality. Stop it here, stop it now. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. I have no other speakers who have filled out a form. Anyone else like to speak on this matter at this public hearing? If not, I will close the public hearing, and I would ask for a motion to adopt the resolution, or is there any further discussion or debate?
I'll make a motion to approve item F1.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Before I vote, I want to make a few comments. Two points that I think Mr. Scaff has brought up is worthy of some discussion and consideration. Thank you, Mr. Scaff, for, you sent us last week your information and your chart showing the differences, and I, I have to admit that I was taken aback by it because I think Mr. Scaff has some good points. You know, we, we've talked about what we wanted to accomplish in the 419 Plan, and an approach that tries to reduce some of the density, that tries to limit and, and provide for more open space, makes a lot of sense and seems to fit within some of the principles that we were talking about when we embarked on this several years ago. The second point is, I think we all have to acknowledge, as Mr. Scaff has pointed out, our friends at, our friends at Tanglewood aren't building stuff based on our plan. You know, I think when we had our work session, you know, I, I commented that we have, what, 600 and some employees, I think, at Carillion, and it is unsafe for them to walk to the three or four restaurants that are fronting on 419. There, there's no easy way to get there if you were one of those employees without playing Frogger on, on the road network there. And if you look at the road network, it, it doesn't fit any of what we hope to accomplish in the design guidelines. And I know Mr. Thompson and our staff had indicated, well, this is a 20- or 30-year plan, and we hope that there will be a transition into what we hope in our design guidelines. But I, I, I look at what Mr. Scaff has given us, and in all honesty, a lot of what he suggests makes a lot of sense in terms of reducing some of the density and, and trying to implement some of the broader goals that we were talking about. I guess the, the contrary view that I have, though, is, and what I struggle with, as a conservative, I wanted to, I want more opportunities by right. I want less government regulation, and by following what we are proposed here, we are saying to the private property owners, you can go higher, you can go bigger, you can go larger, and isn't that, isn't that what we believe in, or at least I hope we believe in, in terms of private property rights? And, and we realize that there are restrictions through our zoning ordinance, and then this approach that, that we have before us tries to give greater opportunity to that private property owner to go bigger, to go taller, to cover more of his or her land. And so I'm struggling. I, when I read the materials that Mr. Scaff gave us, it made an awful lot of sense to me, but then it kind of conflicted with my conservative principles of trying to allow the private property owner to maximize his or her use for his property. And so I'm kind of torn. I, I understand what we're trying to accomplish, and, and the, the information in the chart that Mr. Scaff gave us, you know, if this were a football game, he scores a lot of points, particularly in terms of what we articulated as our principles for the 419 Design Guidelines. That kind of conflicts, though, with my view of, let's allow our private property owners to maximize their opportunity for development. I, I, I'm going to vote yes on this matter, and it will pass, but I want to, I want to send a message to our citizens like Mr. Scaff, who has given us very good data, very well reasoned, and he is holding us basically to our own words, and he's pointing out, as a practical matter, despite our design guidelines, our friends at Tanglewood aren't really building anything that fits our design guidelines.
If I can comment, the, the story hasn't been completed at Tanglewood yet.
Good point.
So there can be a lot more development. We, we need to also understand that that's private property, and so while we give them the design guidelines, we give them, we're, we're hoping that they'll go along with that vision, but it's, we haven't seen the end of it yet. We haven't seen the end game yet, so there's, there's hope that maybe one day they'll have some type of interconnection with, with sidewalks and additional building in, in that.
So we've got a little ways to go.
Thank you. I vote yes, Madam Clerk. Long aside, I apologize. Item G, G1, this is a petition of the gallery at South Peak LLC to rezone approximately 10.83 acres from C2C High Intensity Commercial District with conditions to R4C High Density Multifamily Residential District with conditions to R4C High Density Multifamily Residential with amended conditions to construct 260 apartments located in the 5,000 block of the Pete's Drive, K Spring Magisterial District. This is a request for public hearing and first reading of rezoning ordinance. It is our consent agenda. I would move the approval of the first reading and schedule the second reading for October 25, 2022. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item H, first reading of ordinances. H1 is an ordinance accepting and appropriating $290,700 and further appropriating $75,000 of capital fund reserves for the purchase of approximately 56 acres to expand public access to Reed Mountain Preserve, Hollins Magisterial District. Ms. Webb.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Reed Mountain Preserve became a 243-acre park in Roanoke County back in 2008 as a result of citizen-initiated efforts that were primarily led by the Reed Mountain Alliance. In 2020, Roanoke County was able to obtain an additional 304 acres that allowed for an expansion on the north side of the mountain that protected Buzzard Rock and the northern slopes of Reed Mountain below the ridgeline. Today, the park is a total of 547 acres. It's a passive recreation park with a trailhead located in the Bon Sac community on the south side of Reed Mountain with over five miles of trails that have been built by the Pathfinders for Greenways. Since that time, when the 304 acres was acquired, staff have continued negotiating with the landowners who own land along Old Mountain Road and, or have land adjacent to Reed Mountain Preserve. They have recently indicated their willingness to subdivide and sell an additional 56 acres to Roanoke County. Included in your board report are a site plan that outlines the proposed subdivision of the property that shows also improvements to provide public access to Old Mountain Road with a parking lot and access road, and Roanoke County staff intends to partner with the Pathfinders for Greenways to expand trails on this property in the future. The funding appropriation request before you today would allow Roanoke County staff to accept Virginia Outdoors Foundation funding in the amount of $150,000 as well as funding from the Pathfinders for Greenways in the form of a private donation from an estate in the amount of $90,000 and $50,700 from their general funds. Staff are recommending that $75,000 be allocated from Roanoke County's capital reserves to backfill the outstanding balance needed to complete the project. The project would allow for staff to complete all the due diligence items needed to kind of secure the property acquisition from the landowners as well as conduct surveying based on environmental assessments, title research, to complete the land acquisition. In closing, staff are recommending approval of this ordinance so we can get started on all the due diligence items to complete this land transaction. Staff are envisioning that final development plans would need to be prepared after the land is acquired, and we would seek further grant funding in the future to actually build the improvements on the property. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions that you may have about the ordinance.
Any questions, Ms. Webb?
No questions.
Mr. Radford?
$75,000 capital funds for 2023, '24. This year?
It would be in this current year.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, I would ask for a motion to approve the first reading and schedule our second reading for October 11th.
Chairman, I'm making a move that we approve item H1 and schedule a second reading October 11th.
Do we have a second?
Twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item I1, second reading of ordinances. An ordinance accepting and appropriating transportation alternatives set aside program grant funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation fiscal years 2023 and 2024 in the amount of $651,375 for the Glade Creek Greenway through Vineyard Park West in the Vinton Magisterial District and in the town of Vinton. Ms. Cronace.
Good afternoon again. This is the second reading of this item. There have been no changes since the first reading, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about the project.
Any questions, Ms. Cronace? If not?
Motion to approve item A, got ahead of myself here. I1.
I1.
Second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. And it still scares me that it takes all that money to do half-mile, one-half-mile of the Greenway. Item J, J1, public hearing and second reading of ordinances. An ordinance amending Chapter 5, Animals and Fowl, Article 2, Dogs, Cats, and Other Animals, Section 5-27, Barking or Howling Dogs, and 5-34, Penalties of the Code of Roanoke County. Mr. Lubek.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is the second reading, and there have been no changes since the first reading. If there are no questions, I would invite the board to hold a public meeting on this matter and then to consider adopting the amendments to the Roanoke County Code.
Are there any questions of Mr. Lubek before I open the public hearing? If not, I will open the public hearing. I have no speakers lined up on this matter. Anyone want to talk about barking dogs?
Well, I will say this, that I did appreciate, and several of my citizens who complained about this went back and watched our prior, prior meeting as you explained how, how that will take place once this is adopted. I just want to say I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And if you need a motion, I'll motion to approve J1.
Well, seeing or hearing no citizens who want to speak to this matter, I will close the public hearing. Then I have a motion.
J1.
Second.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. J2 is an ordinance amending Chapter 13, Offenses Miscellaneous, Article 1, in general, Section 13-5.5, Urban Archery Hunting Season, the Roanoke County Code. Ms. Lauer, Senior Assistant County Attorney.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Likewise, this is a second reading and a public hearing of an ordinance to amend the Urban Archery Hunting Season Code section of the county code to bring it in compliance with the terms of the Virginia State Code. County staff recommends approval of the ordinance, and if, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. answer.
Any questions, Ms. Lauer? If not, I will open the public hearing. Again, I have no speakers on this matter. Any citizen in the audience wish to speak to this matter? If not, I will close the public hearing, and I would ask for a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Motion to adopt.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yep.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Item K is appointments. We have a list of appointments here. Does any board member have an appointment that has not been submitted to the clerk? Did you ask one? No. We just did that one.
It is.
No, it's not. It's Chapter 13. It's a different chapter. It's Chapter 5 there. It says Chapter 13. I asked the county attorney for clarification. Did I overlook anything, Mr. Lubek, in our agenda?
Sir, I do not see that we have. I believe that we are appropriately on K appointments.
It says Chapter 13. One says Chapter 5. That's why I'm asking if it's listed twice on here.
Under J1, that was an ordinance amending Chapter 5. That was the barking dogs. And J2 is Chapter 13. That was Ms. Lauer's.
Item K, any appointments that have not been submitted to the clerk? If not, we will go to item L, which is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted one resolution in the form or forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Anyone wants to remove anything from the consent agenda? If not, I would welcome a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
Madam Clerk, you're ahead of me.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Item M is Citizen Comments and Communications. Mr. Scaff. Mr. Scaff wants to speak to the Roanoke County 200 Plan Community Engagement.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I would like to point out some underlying assumptions of the slide presentation on community engagement, Roanoke County 200 Plan, Your Community, Your Voice, Roanoke County Board of Supervisors, Work Session, August 23rd. These implicit assumptions support density development despite contrary resident sentiment in the online survey. The current Roanoke County Comprehensive Plan, the plan about to be replaced, states, quote, "There exists a very intrinsic relationship between the natural beauty that exists here and people's perception of quality of life here in the county," unquote. The 12 community planning area development policies created from community input indicate that natural beauty is of fundamental importance to everyone who lives here. The Planning Department appears to be in the process of replacing this principle with, quote, "Protect and preserve rural and agricultural areas with zoning and future land use designations. Develop and redevelop in areas that have infrastructure and development now, suburban and urban growth areas," unquote. It is not credible that such deference on the part of suburbanites would be so frequently articulated in community meetings that it should rise to such prominence. Few suburban residents would be in favor of ruining their neighborhoods with density development in order to spare rural residents. This opposition between rural and suburban appears to have been fabricated and then encouraged by the Planning Department. The online survey indicates that suburban and rural residents both want to protect all of Roanoke County from density development. The oppressive bulk of these buildings, length and width as well as height, will destroy the architectural integrity of a neighborhood as well as block sunlight, eliminate natural view sheds, cause traffic congestion, increase itinerant renters who often feel little commitment to the community or the property. I am not advocating no development. This is a straw man that the Planning Department has constructed to make opposition to density development seem unreasonable. Quote, "Many citizens like it now and don't want it to change, grow, or develop more," unquote. This slide conveniently omits the fact that building more single-family housing received the most votes in the online survey, exceeding by far no development. Development is positive when it preserves quality of life while the population and the built environment increase. For Roanoke County, it is a balance and mutual presence, suburban as well as rural, local as well as regional, between the natural and the built. This can be done with small, freestanding, multi-use buildings surrounded by indigenous vegetation. I respectfully ask that the board -- ask the board to be vigilant when considering the Roanoke 200 Plan and make the necessary adjustments when it is presented to you for review. The complete plan with all community planning areas should be made public in its entirety, not the redacted brochures the Planning Department envisions. Also, the complete report of the online survey provided by the survey vendor should be made public. These belong to the residents of Roanoke County who paid for them and whose future depends on them. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Item N on our agenda is reports. We have five reports here. I would ask for a motion to adopt the resolution, receiving and accepting these reports.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Item O is work sessions. Our first and only work session is a work session to review with the board the preliminary and unaudited financial results for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, and budget planning for fiscal year 2024 for Roanoke County. Ms. Gerhart and Mr. Elliott will be doing that for us up on the third floor. So we will go into recess now for this work session, and then we're going to be coming back at 7:00.